Those are certified as a elementary and middle school.
Yeah, certainly.
They were just asking that. I did not know that yet.
Stand by two minutes.
Where'd you put it? Oh, there you put it.
Yeah, it was four, three, three or four in the second. Three, four, five, the one.
Mike and Josh.
Stand by.
It looks like it's the same as the first one.
Yeah, exactly.
Tuesday. Yes, that's the fifteenth at one thirty. Yes, I have that. Yep. Sleep.
Yeah.
I mean, the game's at four o'clock in the afternoon, so.
So he'll be up for like an hour before the game.
Eight, seven, six, seven, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, October tenth, two thousand nineteen, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting is being recorded, aired live on LCTV, and livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement that anyone recording the meeting disclose that they are doing so at this time. Seeing none, please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reading public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody could just stand again. Friday was brought to my attention, the passing of Dave Bartlett, who longtime employee of LCTV or was the station manager. You know, when I first came on this board back in two thousand seven, two thousand and eight, Dave was there. He was there every day, always with a friendly smile, always willing to accommodate everything he could. He worked with us as we built the new high school to transform LCTV, the studios, to enable communication in this town. You know, multiple modes of communication. You couldn't ask for a more gentle or kind soul in this town. And Dave represented everything that was good about Long Meadow. My daughter went to school with his daughter, and you know, we see his wife around town, and I just feel so sad for the family. So just hope that everybody can just join us in a moment of silence to recognize a great loss to this town. Thank you. Correspondence?
Memo from Donald, Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of Occupational Education at C-TAC dated September thirty, two thousand nineteen, regarding the Walter E. Quigley Jr. Student of the Month Awards for September of two thousand nineteen. Long Meadow student honored this month was Joseph Klezak, Integrated Occupational Prep. Two thank you notes from the staff at Wolf Swamp Road School, one dated September twenty-five, two thousand nineteen, and the second received on October third, two thousand nineteen, and an email from Ms. Liz Bone dated September twenty-four, two thousand nineteen, regarding the Energy and Sustainability Committee.
Great. We have approval of minutes. We do have minutes for approval. Is there a motion?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, school committee meeting as presented.
Motion. Is there a second? Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining? Okay. I will now open the floor to visitor comments. I think we do have a visitor. They're here for a presentation. Name and address, please.
Stephen Morantz, one seventeen Rugby Road.
Mr. Morantz, I was incorrect. You do have at least three minutes, and I would give you more if need be.
All right. I shorten this just for the two minutes. Thank you. I want to talk to you tonight about the metering station Tennessee Gas and Columbia Gas want to build on Long Meadow Country Club property that is in a residential area and is less than one quarter of a mile from Wolf Swamp Elementary School. While I realize that the Long Meadow Safety Committee has told you that this industrial gas facility will pose no safety threat, I'm not so sure they would tell you that today. I encourage you to watch this week's Board of Selectmen meeting, where Chief Dearborn reported Columbia Gas's inability to report gas leaks into town in a timely fashion, and that the Massachusetts Department of Public Utility has temporarily banned Columbia Gas from work in the state because of their sloppy procedures following the Merrimack Valley disaster. I encourage you to read the handout I'm going to leave with you, which will talk about the health risks associated with gas infrastructure. After all, over one hundred boards of health, including Long Meadows, have asked the governor to suspend gas expansion in the state until a statewide study of the health impacts of natural gas is completed. I encourage you to read the October third issue of The Valley Advocate, which is really good, good cover there, which has an in-depth article about the health and safety issues associated with proposed gas expansion in western Massachusetts. I encourage you to read the report, "Rolling a Dice: An Assessment of Gas Safety Systems in Massachusetts", released this month. This report by experts in the field, experts in the field, presents sixty pages of facts and recommendations that I cannot be ignored. Consequently, I urge the school committee to take a strong public stand against the sighting of this gas facility so close to one of the schools under your purview. After all, the planning board has come against this sighting. There have been two town meetings that have come against this sighting, and there's been a public referendum in June that has basically come against this sighting. So I would expect and hope that this committee would take a leadership role in the effort to protect the students who would walk by and ride by this metering station every day. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Morantz. Appreciate the references and the information.
Contact me for any questions, any issues, any statements. Please do not hesitate. And I will give you my handout that I would all like you to read.
Perfect. Thank you. Although I'm not sure if they have copies. If you give it to Sue, she'll make sure everybody gets a copy. Thank you. I know we have a very long distance comment in the crowd.
Good evening. Rebecca Townsend, one sixty Ely Road. I am very thankful to speak with you tonight and to welcome Anna Piewbilska from the University of Warsaw, who's to my right. I don't know her address to share, but I know it's in Poland. And as you know, we are partnering with the University of Warsaw as a town to test out the in-dialogue software. And I wanted to thank Susan Bell and Dr. O'Shea for their efforts in coordinating as part of the steering committee and the committee's support in approving this project. As you also know, we are slightly delayed due to technical difficulties with the server in the town and its ability to host multiple softwares at once. We haven't yet been able to host ours, but we are working with town officials in seeking a solution to that problem. It should be forthcoming soon, and we will be happy to share those. And I know Anna is very interested in speaking with you at some point individually, and I just wanted to introduce her to you and to those who are watching at home, that she is a real person and she is here in town. And if you wanted to say any words, here, let me put this in front of you.
I would be more than happy to test with anyone who is interested individually, the software, to introduce you to the software before the forum so that you are familiar with it. And of course, I welcome any questions. Thank you. Thank you for your interest in software news.
And that's really it. Thanks a lot. All right. Take care.
Thanks, Anna. I'll try not to say the last name because I know I'll murder it. All right. Any school committee announcements or recognitions?
I do, I'm a.
Yes.
So I just wanted to let everybody know that the American Sign Language Club at Williams has been making some progress in collaboration and communication with the new sign language club at the high school. So thank you all again for that, and Dr. Goule's been awesome. So we're just looking forward to the next steps.
Awesome. Anybody else? The only thing I'd like to recognize, if you see the shirt I'm wearing, it says Feed the Kids. One of our teachers, Carol Dagel, did a huge fundraiser about Monday pass to benefit children for No Kids Hungry, as well as a Holyoke program where they give backpacks out on the weekend full of food, and they bring the backpacks back and take them back on the next weekend. And I just wanted to point out the great volunteer work that's done by not only our students here, but by our faculty as well. So kudos to her. Moving on then, business with guests. Social Studies textbooks. Come on down. Oh, look at them. Could that be a better entrance or ladder?
Yeah.
So we'll have the gang introduce themselves shortly. Appreciate the committee giving us a chance to give you a sort of check-in on where we are with the, as we move towards the adoption of a new history and social studies framework. And Sue, I know, will have some introductory remarks. I'd simply say that what I appreciate is that the Social Studies Department has used this as an opportunity, really, to help us with our effort to sort of redefine what student success looks like. I mean, that's something we've been talking about all year, is having a broader vision, new understanding of student success, and being sure that we're offering students multiple ways to achieve success. And so I appreciate that the committee, in their adoption of the new framework, has embraced that idea. So welcome. And Sue, if you want to.
That's a good introduction of that because when thinking about standards-based learning, we're told that we should interact with great appropriate text every day as part of what we do. But really, for deeper learning, meaning we need to grapple with real-world problems every day, explore data every day, have scientific conversations every day, and provide all that in a safe, healthy learning environment, right? And so we have been, at Central Office, kind of barraging the history department with lots and lots of questions, and some of you had questions, and finance sub had questions. So I'm not quite sure how sick of questions I are, but I thought maybe I'd try to answer a few that we have had, and some of you may have had before they get going. The text is here, if you want to take a peek at it, and it's one they're currently using for their history course. And they are proposing that they use this same text for the ninth grade and the eleventh grade, US one and US two. And they have lots of reasons I'll talk about for that. But kind of the first thing lots of us said, but it's a different grade level. How can you use the same text? And did a lot of research, had a lot of talk with the book rep from Houghton Mifflin, and a lot of the history text in particular is written for high school. The frameworks are a nine through twelve frameworks. They give the flexibility to the districts as to when they want to teach and where they want to teach which subject. And so they're not writing a ninth-grade textbook and a tenth grade. They're writing a nine-through-twelve span textbook. So I put my old hat on and got out some tools and tested the reading level, kind of going through the book, beginning, middle, and end. And it started at like end of eighth grade, and in the middle it was kind of nine-eleven, nine through ten. And at the end it was kind of eleven, twelve, some college, depending on the primary source stuff that's in there. So it's got a range of readability in there, and by no means did I check every page, but I just kind of, on the surface and skimmed it, looked like it was kind of going up. And the book rep did say that the Lex file moved up as the text got towards the end. So the light test that I did indicated that. So I just wanted you to know that. We might have some open-source questions later that we can ask as they come up. But I'm going to give it over to Mr. Landers, and he can introduce his amazing staff.
Thanks, Sue. Thanks, Marty. So here's why I'm excited about this. I'm excited because like what Marty said, this is what we're trying to do. We're trying to make learning more meaningful, more applicable, more learned, more deeply, more relevant, more individualized to student, student learning. And the Social Studies Department is excited about that, and they're embracing that. They're embracing not just the letter of the frameworks and the civics law, but the spirit of it. So I see this as the intersection of, you know, what we're trying to do with the Vision of the Graduate, what we're trying to do with Castle, what we're trying to do with deeper learning, and the intersection of our Social Studies teachers really embracing the spirit of the frameworks, which asks for more inquiry-based learning, for a deeper delve, for primary source, increased primary source usage. And then the civics law is being embraced, not just in terms of doing more civics, but they're excited, and I'm excited about the dive in the first month of eleventh grade, of junior year. So I want to thank Heather Pollard. I want to thank Megan Schwartz. I want to thank Lori Snyder because they are the ones who have done the work, and I'm going to turn it over to them and let them tell us a little bit about it.
Great. Tom, I'll start. Sue, you can.
Move it?
Yeah, you can move it.
You've got to be really clear with me.
You can move it. I'm Megan Schwartz. I'm the Social Studies Chair at Long Meadow High School. And we're really excited to be presenting to you where we're at with the frameworks, the new frameworks, and what Long Meadow High School is going to be doing with them and the excitement we have about the process in these new frameworks. So to start, I thought it'd be fun to take a look at a primary source. The new frameworks embraces much more primary sources than the two thousand and three frameworks, which we're going to look at in a little bit. But if I was teaching a social studies class or any of my colleagues, you might see something like this at the start of a lesson, where the students would look at a primary source, and you could do this a number of ways. But this I would have on a screen, just the picture of these boys. There's newspapers. You can see they're kind of dirty. And I'm just going to ask you, as I'm describing an analysis and how you look at a primary source, to just look at the photo. So if this was my classroom, I would show the students the photo, have them aware of the analysis below the photo, and they would delve into a deeper learning process as we went through the photo. So it'd start very basic with a meet the photo, where they'd take a quick look at it and just look and see what type of photo it is. So they would see, is this a portrait? Is this a documentary? Is it a selfie? Is it, is it, is it a portrait? What is this photo? So they would kind of look at that and then get into a little bit of a deeper learning where they would recognize first the people. What are the people doing? And talk to each other in small groups and describe those people. And hopefully, they'd realize, as I'm sure you do now, they're children in various ages who are a little bit dirty, a little disheveled. They're holding newspapers in front of a brick building. Then they might look at the objects. So they're holding newspapers, and they'd be talking to their fellow students about this and what kind of activities these kids would be doing before Lewis Hines stopped them to take this photo. Then they'd write a sentence, share it with each other, and then share it with the class, one sentence about this photo and what they discovered. So this is completely inquiry-based learning. It's deeper learning. It's not a social studies teacher talking about the industrial era, talking about children working in industrial factories, et cetera. This is them discovering. So then we'd move on further, and the students would then take a look at what is known from the photo, what can they see from the photo, basically what is happening that they could see, and why do they, what did they think later in history could happen because of this photo? So they're delving much more in depth in discovering what's going on in this photo. Then we tie it to history as a whole and discuss the time period. What does this photo tell you about the time period? What other interests might you have? What other documents or other sources would go well with this photo that could help you discover which is the progressive era? So the progressive time period of industrialization. So this photo itself was taken actually in North Hampton, and it's a nineteen twelve photo, and they wouldn't know that yet. But this would be kind of a standoff, kind of a start off into the progressive era. And they'd be doing the discovering, not the teachers doing the telling. So this is an example of what the new frameworks is asking teachers across the state of Massachusetts to do. And you can switch now, Sue. So the new law, we have a new civic law, we have our new social studies standards. They work together. And I'm going to go over the bottom one first. So the new standards for history and our social sciences emphasize these skills. They emphasize formulating questions, conducting research, evaluating sources, synthesizing information, critical thinking, accountability. Basically, it's our vision of the graduate, which is happening here. We also have a new component that Lori's going to speak of a little bit later that is very much civic skilled. It's designed to strengthen student skills in citizenship and political participation. And you can move on, Sue. So this is a great example of the difference, the extreme differences between the two thousand and three frameworks, which we've been working on until this new framework in two thousand and eighteen. And I took, we took the progressive era because that's what the photo is dealing with to tie everything together. So if you take a look at the two thousand and three framework, the framework says to analyze the origins of progressivism and important progressive leaders and summarize the major accomplishments of progressivism. Then it lists an A through I in an A through H, which, looking at it, we can make a great matching part of a test or a great multiple-choice question about the people and the policies. The two thousand and eighteen is totally different. It is deeper learning. It says, "Explain why progressives meant," I'm sorry, "explain what progressivism meant in the early twentieth century and analyze a text or image by a progressive leader." And there's a list of many of the same people. So instead of knowing all of them, you're doing more of an in-depth look at one, which is great for our students. Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to add, too, is that one of the differences I see, especially with this, I teach US history, which is this particular unit, is we have been doing the two thousand and eighteen since two thousand and three, in fact, since nineteen ninety-six, when I started here. I'm in my twenty-fourth year. What we have now is a state framework that supports what we have always done here. And so it makes me feel a lot better about the fact that the state has finally caught up to what was considered, you know, when I was in graduate school in nineteen ninety-five, cutting-edge history. And so I don't see this as a major change in terms of how we're teaching, but what we now have is a framework that supports what we've always known, that this is good teaching.
Yeah, in Long Meadow, because we have done this. You can walk into our classes and see the primary source activities. We're very active learners.
Absolutely.
And so another example here is, instead of, again, memorizing the list, which is what the frameworks entails in the two thousand and three, it's research and analyze one of the following governmental policies of the progressive period, determine the problem it was designed to solve, and assess its long- and short-term effectiveness. So you have that same list, but it is much more in-depth. It's deep learning. And again, as Lori said, it supports what we've already been doing as a district. Okay, Sue?
Okay, stop, you guys, for a second.
Yeah.
Do you want to take questions as we go, or do you want to hold the end?
Sure.
Okay, great. Just making sure if anybody has a question, just let me know. Thanks.
Yep. So where we're at. The existing sequence, it was eighth-grade US origins of the Revolution to eighteen seventy-seven, which is the end of Reconstruction. The ninth grade is world history, five hundred to the French Revolution. Tenth is modern world. Eleventh is the US two course, which started at eighteen seventy-seven and ends at the attack of the World Trade Centers. And then in twelfth grade, we are able to offer a lot of wonderful electives to our students, Asian Studies, Music and Culture, Media and Society, Community Service Learning, AP European History, and Psychology. The new sequence has already started. Civics is already going in eighth grade. Next year, the ninth grade, and notice the year difference, is US seventeen seventy to nineteen twenty. The tenth grade is going to be a modern world history class from the French Revolution to modern globalization. And the eleventh US two class changes as well, and it's now in alignment with the frameworks. It's nineteen twenty to the US response to global terrorism with an emphasis, a huge emphasis, on economics, modernity, defending democracy, and globalization. And the twelfth grade electives are the same.
So the date changes there are mandated by the state frameworks?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. And so where we are in our timeline, our sequence of implementing our changes, right now, two thousand and nineteen, the eighth-grade civics class has been implemented. And Lori's going to talk in just a minute about our grade eleven civic action project that we're going to be piloting this year. Next year, our incoming ninth graders will take the new US one class, and we'll still have our tenth-grade modern world and the eleventh grade, still the US two to eighteen seventy-seven to two thousand and one. We're going to revamp, as you can see with our class of two thousand and twenty-three. In the following year, they'll take the revamped tenth-grade class, which adds French Revolution and just a little bit of differences. The frameworks didn't spend a lot of time on the tenth-grade curriculum with the changes with the research and analysis and critical thinking. It's much more like the two thousand and three changes. So that class isn't going to change very much. And then the eleventh-grade class, you'll see, will be taking the revamped curriculum that starts in nineteen twenty, all the way up through the US response to terrorism and including, obviously, our civics project. And now I'm going to hand it over to Lori, who will talk about the civics project, and then Heather's going to talk about our resources.
Hi. I worked on the Action Civics Project along with my colleague Stacy Smith this past summer. I think we had requested summer work in the neighborhood of thirteen hours to work on many things besides just the civics action project. But as we got into the civics action project, it's actually quite complicated and deep, and we used our entire thirteen hours up on the Action Civics Project. So it was a really interesting dive, first dive, into what this is going to look like. So I think the thing to understand is that as we got into this, what we realized is that the framework that we're currently dealing with, the two thousand and three framework, is full. We don't have room for a giant Action Civics Project while we're still implementing the two thousand and three framework. So keeping that in mind, we realized that we need to phase the Action Civics Project in over a series of years. And that also gives us time to do a Plan Do Study Act and focus on continuous improvement so that we're collecting data on the first year and then making, continuing summer work the next summer, and then collecting data from teacher. and then collecting data from teachers and students, and then being able to kinda make and adjust as we move into like what I would call like a full implementation of our vision of what an Action Civics project would actually look like. So just to kinda refresh, like Action Civics means that this is a student-led, student-driven project. Teachers are not to be driving the civics project. And so we see this as coming in, it makes a great connection with the progressive era and it just so happens, because Meg picked that picture, I didn't even know that. But that this is a natural place to put this project in. It fits in very well with what we're focusing on during the progressive era is that it's a time period in US history where there's a lot of issues facing American society. There's political corruption issues, there's economic corruption issues, there's a lot of social problems like child labor. And what happened was that the government was overwhelmed and the government wasn't really stepping up and solving the problem. So certain individuals took it upon themselves to spearhead, to identify the problem, to research the problem, to try to come up with a plan to solve the problem. Some met with some limited success, some did not. But that what we tried to get the students to see is that a lot of these problems from the early 20th century continue to plague us in the 21st century. And so, you know, an issue of food safety in 1905 and 1906 is still an issue today. And it's actually a pretty current issue with food sourcing and things like that. And so we have been making those comparisons between what's going on in our own society today with what was going on 100 years ago and what role should we have? And that in many situations, activists are just ordinary Americans. They're ordinary Americans whose lives get touched by something that unfortunately impacts them in many cases negatively. And, you know, we, same time period, you have Ida B. Wells, you have Booker T. Washington, you have W. E. B. Du Bois, who are looking at problems like lynching in the United States. And Ida B. Wells had a friend of hers who was lynched. And she became an anti-lynching activist because it was unjust. And so what we wanna see, we want our kids to understand is that these people that they read about when they were sitting in high school probably weren't dreaming of becoming an activist. But that circumstances happen and then, you know, this is how they end up in that situation. And so this year already, like in the government unit, we've talked about how town meeting works, how to get something on the warrant, what it takes to get a special town meeting called in town. We looked at the speed bump issue. You know, like there's some really good local stuff and a lot of real local activism going on in this town that the kids... Oh, I know, we looked at the plastic bag ban. You know, I asked the juniors, do you know where that came from? Oh, no, we have no idea, they have no idea. So, you know, I talked to Marty, I said, Marty, can you send me that video he used opening day? Where they learned, it was fifth graders, you know, who started that. And our lives have all changed because of it. Because they identified a problem, they were passionate about the problem and they brought the problem forward and the community voted on the issue. So, you know, we wanted to teach them that this is real life, this isn't some academic exercise. You know, it really speaks, we're excited about it. It speaks to deeper learning, it speaks to SEL. And it gives students an opportunity to identify problems in their own community, whether it's LHS community. And when we're looking at it, we're seeing, we wanna keep it locally focused as much as we want to. You know, like, yes, the increase in vaping, for example, is a national issue, but it affects LHS. So we want them to identify problems right here at LHS in Long Meadow in Western Mass. We want them to, you know, explore issues and research the issues that they're interested in. So they're gonna have to generate those issues. We're not giving them, you know, a handout, like here's some topics. You know, when we were in high school, here's some topics, you have to do a research paper, pick one that you're interested in. No, it has to be generated by them and we're excited about this. We don't know what they're gonna come up with. That's why we need to implement this gradually, because we wanna see what they come up with and know where we need to step in and provide that guidance. Until we go through it the first time, we don't really know what the issues are gonna be and how much of our guidance and assistance we need to provide for them. So anyway, they're gonna, for phase one, they're gonna identify issues, brainstorm issues. Then they're going to group up based on some common interest and they're gonna research the issues. And they're gonna look at, you know, what's, what's the, you know, why is it a problem? You know, why is it a problem? Find out that, what is it about? What do you want people to know about this particular issue that you identify it as being an issue? And then what we want to do, because we were like, okay, if we have every student do this individually, holy moly, that's 48 student-led projects, we're not ready for that yet. And so maybe what we need to do is think about how to do this in groups. And so to the best of our ability, we're kinda predicting, like we think this will be the way that this will go for the first year. They're gonna then make presentations to the class. And then the class will vote on their top one or two issues that they feel like the class as a whole is passionate about. And because this year, it's worked into an already full framework, 1877 to 2001, the action piece is to be, to work on writing, contacting the appropriate local government official, whether that's the principal, whether it's you guys, whether it's Senator Lesser or Representative Ash. We don't know yet. But that we wanna walk them through that, how do you write a business letter? And you are not mailing them, we're gonna email them because we're using 21st century technology. But they need to be sort of taught how to do that. That's not the endpoint of our vision. Our vision is that's a stopgap measure to get us through this next year before the curriculum framework comes in. The next step after that would be, once the presentations are done, we're envisioning now is that the students would then select one issue and then could kinda, at that point, become, take action. And to take action, we're talking, what does that look like? What is that, what are some options that kids will have? We want them to have choice. We know that with choice comes greater investment into the project. And so, you know, some students, some things Stacy and I taught, like brainstormed was, they could be doing a public service announcement. You know, they can be using LCTV and putting together a public service announcement. They can be putting together an infographic. I did an infographic project with my juniors last year for the first time. And infographics are very hot right now as a visual way of getting across information. So teaching them how to do an infographic, putting together a pamphlet of information. And that, we would let students kinda move to the vehicle that they want to develop that's going to make it more of an active campaign or an active action plan, if you will. And that's where we see it. And then potentially down the road, given, you know, we were thinking we could even take it perhaps one step further where there was actual outside presence to what we're doing. So that there would be a showcase or something like that if it goes in that direction. But we don't, right now, we don't know. The state hasn't provided a lot of guidance with this, I have to be honest. We're doing the best we can here, but we're super excited about it. And I can tell you, because I've been talking it up with my juniors...
That's a good thing that the state's not...
Talking it up about them, they are so excited about this.
I don't think anybody here can tell you're excited.
You know, I'm excited about it. I'm like, you know, you guys, I spent 13 hours of my summer on this. We're excited about it, but it's gonna take at least 13 more hours next summer to bring phase two into fruition. We wanna do this well, we want our kids engaged, and we want this meaningful. And, you know, and I'm excited because they knocked out 50 years of US history so I can do a quality project with my students. I mean, Marty started the year asking us as teachers, what were the memorable projects you did that you still remember from school? And I was so excited sitting in Marty's session with this emphasis on deeper learning and project-based learning. It's long overdue and we've been, we've known this as teachers, you know, our entire careers. This is where good learning happens. I'm excited that the state is backing us up. I think you guys should be excited about what we have in store for the children of Long Meadow. It's gonna be good.
Excellent.
Awesome.
Well done.
Lori spent about 50 hours this summer, we paid her about 13.
Did you wanna say anything about this line, Marty?
Yeah, so Tom said it well at the beginning, you know, and there's so many sort of arrows that seem to be pointing us towards civic action, you know. And it, as Tom said, very supportive of the vision of the graduate, that the Castle Competencies will be given a chance to be embedded in students through these projects. We've talked about community-based learning opportunities. That's something that, you know, I think many of us are strongly interested in is creating opportunities for kids to go beyond the walls of their schools. And we're seeing more and more of that. The new frameworks, you know, the student-directed learning and opportunities for students to dive deep. So Lori said it really well, you know, the whole notion of choice equals investment equals passion equals learning. You know, those are, when you pull all that together, great things happen. So I share their excitement. It really is reflective of, I think, a lot of existing directions and it ties together a lot of existing directions. So that was our effort to kinda capture that, I think.
Right, I have a question. You were talking about how the students will be grouping up to do their projects and then after presenting them, choose one to actually act on. So would all the groups like vote and decide which one they wanna do?
Yeah, they're democratic process, you know. And like I said, we're still kinda trying to work out how this is gonna be manageable, you know, for them and for us. And so right now, that's the idea. And it may not be just one, it may be two that we end up, you know. It depends on your class size. Last year I had 27 juniors, I'm gonna have to do two projects. If I have a class of 12, I might be able to do one project. So it really just depends on, you know, your class size that particular year. And probably also, you know, your students, you know, as well. So you can sort of make that decision as a teacher. But I wouldn't see there being more than, you know, probably three of these going on within any particular class. You have to understand that the teacher has multiple sections. So you might be overseeing, you know, anywhere's from two to eight projects, you know. And if we're gonna be doing that active component, that's a lot of, you know, responsibility to make sure that that's, it's happening and it's being done well and everybody's pulling their weight.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Wait, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I can't resist. So this is really exciting. Thank you for giving us the overview. And I mean, as somebody who does this in my classes in college, it is super exciting. It's also really, really hard. And I just wanna make sure we acknowledge, like, it is really hard. And we're asking the teachers to do something that they might not be familiar with, comfortable with. And I just wanna put that out there, right? I mean, this is a big lift, if you're not used to doing this, to try to go and do this. And it's gonna take time and it's probably gonna take several years to get to a point where we actually know how to do it well. And the other thing that I also wanna just highlight from my own experience, this is hard for a lot of the kids. And I know from the work that we've done, it's really hard for them to work on a high-stakes project in a group. And it's gonna take time to help them learn how to do group work well. Because I think the group work they do now, I don't think it's this high stakes in that it's probably not this long, it's probably not this intense. And I think in addition to worrying about the content, we need to worry about helping them learn how to do group work well. I mean, I know in college, I mean, we try to help them learn how to do it and I don't think we do a great job of that. And I think if we can help them learn how to do that at LHS, that's gonna have huge impacts on when they get to college, that they'll actually understand how to work well in groups. Because, I mean, the students that I see, many of them, they're not comfortable doing that. They're not used to working with people who aren't their friends and all that stuff. So I think that's gonna be a really important thing to do. And the other thing that I just wanna throw out there as a caution is often when people do group work, it ends up that the students focus too much on the deliverable and too little on the content. And it just, that's a caution to throw out there. I think of the projects I did when I was in high school and I remember that our focus was on how do we make a video? It wasn't on like what were we actually learning how to do? It was like, and again, it was really old-school technology when I was in high school. But it was like, how do we find the camcorder and how do we do that? And then like I watched the video like a couple of years later, it's like, I don't think we learned anything other than how to do like AV, right? So anyway, those are just some things that are in my head that I'm sure that you're thinking about, but I think is important for us to recognize.
Yeah, just to respond, Kevin, I think you raised some really great points. And I would say, you know, being, all of the teachers in social studies are veteran teachers. You know, we have a lot of experience with designing group projects. And like our generation, we didn't do that that much and we weren't taught well how to do that. And, you know, even starting in ninth grade, I'm trying to teach my students how to work effectively in a group, what to do with the, you know, and this is very colloquial, but like the controlling person and the slacker person. You know, how do we handle conflict? And that is something that I feel like we do really well in social studies. Like we address that right from the beginning. We try and always have to develop clearly defined roles within groups and have a combination of reflection and self-assessment, group assessment plus teacher observation. And that, you know, waiting to when the project is over and coming to the teacher and saying, hey, you know, I did all the work and throwing your colleague, you know, your classmate under the bus isn't really effective. And I'll say, you know, I don't have, I don't have a magic wand to go back and solve this problem. Like this is the type of stuff that has to be talked about in advance. So we even talk about, you know, before you even get started and playing to their strengths. Lots of times what we do is we break down roles within the groups, you know, where students then self-select which role they're going to be in and they typically play to their strengths. So, you know, the tech person is gonna be doing the video. The, you know, the writer is gonna be writing the script. And then you might have someone who's working in a facilitator role. Like they're really good at making sure everybody gets into the dialogue. And then your creative arts person is doing some sort of visuals or putting that piece together. But a lot of the projects, would you guys agree, like the projects that we do, I think we make a concerted effort in social studies to play to students' strengths and to teach them how to do this. And that, like I try to tell them, like, you know, when you get older, you sometimes still have to work in groups. And if you, like, we're not any better sometimes at it unless we've been taught how to effectively work in a group. And also to your comment about, this is a lot of work. Yes, as Stacy and I did our dive into this this summer, the magnitude of what we were looking at became extremely clear to us. And then we decided, you know what, we're gonna do kind of a baldrage to pull out an older term that we use in this district. But we're gonna do a continuous improvement, we're gonna roll it out slowly, we're gonna collect data, we're gonna have lots of conversations as a department, we want student feedback. And that we, I mean, honestly, for me, this is, I'm looking at five years before this is probably where it's gonna, you know, be what I would like it to be. And that I'm okay with that process because I wanna do it well. And it's gonna take that much time in order to get it to what our vision of what this should really be. You know, that's normal in teaching. You know, a good curriculum can take seven to 10 years before it's really, you know, in place solid the way you would like it to be, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, some of those skills you're talking about, I mean, even for me, on a daily basis on project teams, you know, outside, like I can control my team and the people who report up through my organization, but then you gotta influence those people in other organizations to, you know, help prioritize your project probably over their project or get funding when, you know, have somebody else maybe take a step back and how do you do that? I mean, and all those skills are directly translatable to that. And so again, I think this is doing our children a great service of giving them those skills. Because I'm gonna tell you, five, 10 years ago, it wasn't like that. And now the workplace has changed dramatically towards that, you know, influencing spheres of influence outside of your direct control.
I just wanted to speak one too, also with the tech. The tech stuff is so different now. The kids have had technology since elementary, so they know how to use the technology. And so like I do these types of projects with seniors all the time in Asian Studies and it's not... And I did the same type of project when we first started, we were doing this reform project. They had to make a video, it was all about the nightmare of the battery of the video. You know, how long do we have before it dies? And the editing took hours. It is not like that anymore. Like they have had technology, so it's actually the message is, the learning piece, I would say now, is the forefront of what I see up at the high school. It's no longer teaching them how to do that. That's been done already at K through 8. What we're doing is hanging content on the technology.
Yeah, I did a podcast with the Enlightenment last year and they all knew how to use the green screen. I was learning from them. I mean, I was just like, so what are we doing? And they all knew how to use the green screen in the library.
Yeah, that's awesome. Suzy?
Yes, I, thank you. This is amazing, your energy is incredible and I'm excited about this. And, you know, my experience in bringing this work to a district as well, I'm just super excited that, you know, you're leading this. And my question really comes down to, and I hear you with wanting to do it well and be very, you know, thoughtful about the process. My question really comes from what if you have a few students who are like, no, we wanna keep going? Like in this project, like we don't wanna stop at just the pamphlet or, you know what I'm saying? Like, where will we, where will we give them that opportunity?
Well, that's where the beauty of this would be. And we would give them opportunities in our classes and outside to continue. I mean, even in, I teach community service learning as, to seniors. And right now, our students are involved not only locally, but we're in Springfield. We are, we are all over Western Mass right now solving these issues. So it'll start then and it'll just, it will give them support to keep going if they are absolutely interested, for sure.
I mean, you know, I think one of the challenges, like we all wanna do it well. Like I completely get that. And sometimes, you know, in my previous experience, I would just tell the teachers, sometimes you just have to embrace the mess. You know, because you will have messes that come up, you know, like, yeah.
But right now, we're working in an old framework. We have to cover that material. So that's what we're, you know, the reality is that we are not implementing a new framework where that 50 years is no longer there. So we have a framework, we have mid-year exams, we have final exams, all based on that framework. And so, you know, certainly if they wanna continue, they're more than free to do so. But as far as like necessarily a course requirement... certainly if they wanna continue, they're more than free to do so, but as far as like a necessarily a course requirement, I don't see that happening next year. Like, it's just not feasible, given the const- the very real construct, constructive that we're dealing with. You know, when the curriculum changes and you have room now for the Action Civic Project, we also don't know how long it's going to take. We have no idea. You know, we, 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 it's our best guess right now. It's, you know, we're, we're working with, that first year is so important. It's, we're, we're gathering baseline data that we can then analyze and, you know, make, adjust our plan as we move forward. You know, we have, we have, I, we have our own idea of what we think this is gonna look like, but like I said, we're, we're very used to messes. Um, you can't be a, as you know, public school teacher without that. You know, and in social studies in general, it's a fairly messy discipline if you're doing it right.
So we'd like to move on if we could to just our, our resources of you. And just a, a quick note. You can see up here, and this ties into the vision of the graduate, it ties into deeper learning. If you walk into a social studies classroom, this is what we'd want you to see. Um, we, we really support cultural awareness. We are problem solvers. We do source analysis. We promote students themselves being historians. We read, we present, we comprehend, we discuss. We do comparing and contrasting, we explore, we interpret, we collaborate and we teach them to collaborate. Um, we use digital literacy and teach them digital literacy. We defend our opinions. We use inquiry, critical thinking. So this is all, we, we try to make history come alive and this is all what we feel we've been doing at Long Meadow. And now the frameworks are kind of meeting us there. So it's pretty cool. And now I'd like to hand it over to Heather who's gonna talk about resources we need for this endeavor. Heather?
Um, so we are looking at, um, continuing using The Americans, which is the book we use with the junior curriculum and we're comfortable with it. We like it. It's a rich narrative. Um, the textbooks, you know, they're not, they're not getting better over time. I think, you know, some of the best histories are ones that were written a long time ago and they stand. Um, you know, but what we do, we are gonna need is we are gonna be needing supplementary resources that encourage that deeper learning, critical thinking, research skills. Um, you know, especially when we take a look at the primary source readers and things that are leveled to meet um, the reading of the ninth grade. Um, we are looking for online subscriptions to History Alive. In, we're examining, we're sort of kinda, we are in some trials of the Discovery Education Streaming Service, which the, uh, elementary school and the middle school do have. And the History Alive program, which has been around for a long time as well, um, that has a lot of really great interactive, um, source material that, that brings the history to, to, you know, the very ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade levels that we need. Um, Lori and I were looking at this great Jefferson Hamilton and they had the masks and you got to be Jefferson Hamilton and make the argument. Um, and so, you know, it was a really great, so active, active engaged learning. Um, multimedia resource materials as well, um, you know, especially as we get into, um, teaching the more contemporary history. Um, I think that there's a definite need to update some of the source materials we have, um, for the juniors as well. Continued PD on information literacy skills, twenty-first century learning skills and diversity. I know we are faced with some pretty crazy questions in today's political climate as social studies teachers. And, um, you know, I think that it would be, we all could use some, uh, more professional development on handling some of the things that come our way in the classroom. Um, so, you know, the investment we're looking for from you is, is for, um, you know, that professional development, um, that's really gonna help us, you know, bring our projects into the podcasts and the infographics and the documentary type. Um, you know, our kids aren't just passive receivers of information, they're gonna be creating information and they, you know, history is something we do. We always say that as departments, we do history. And so helping them take that into that twenty-first century is um, something where we would like to continue to learn as teachers. Um, so the textbook, Why the Americans? It meets our criteria. Um, we for a rich, inclusive, balanced historical narrative. Um, I think we all see the news stories of, you know, different textbook blunders. Um, and there's not that many options left. Those textbook companies have really swallowed each other up over the years and, um, we examine the three, you know, the three major books and that are, you know, the current, they're not better. They're simply not a better narrative. Um, we don't teach from a textbook. Um, you know, but the kids still need to have a source to look to, to read. I mean, that, that skill, yeah, that old fashioned skill of reading something and learning from a text is not going away. Um, and so it's a really great baseline for them. Um, it covers our content, the criteria of the updated history, social studies frameworks. Um, it's a consistency between US one and two. Um, in fact, our sophomore book is from, is, has a similar structure to it. And so all across all three years, their book will be set up the same way. Um, the support material offers good narratives that is already differentiated for unique student abilities. And with this book, we get to use PDF documents to post to our Google Classroom. So this textbook, the company's gonna allow us to just take PDFs of the book and put them on our Google Classroom. So there will be no renewal subscription fee, there'll be no cumbersome login that through the company's website or interface. Um, it is a simple, able to post the book. They can open them on their phones, they can open them on a tablet. Um, but we'd also like to put a book in, in hands. I mean, I think that the kids really do prefer it. We, we sort of rate our students. And they do prefer, I mean, there are students who like the convenience of just having it on their phone. But, you know, we're seeing a lot of kids come in with, uh, oh, I don't need to borrow a book, I'm just gonna take pictures of it on my phone. And, you know, it's just...
I talked to my child today who's in tenth grade and I asked her, what do you prefer, a book or online? And she said, a book because there's too many online distractions. I'm distracted enough and I sit and I read a book and I don't get blings, I don't, I don't get any noise. Um, it's just me and the book. And that has to be said. Um, it's important in this time.
And I just wanna add too, cause I read, Heather and I read the same book on this, that they're, they're doing research. Like, for every assignment that's on, online, it's a fifteen minute distraction before the student gets back to what they're, what is the issue at hand. And so like students, well, today I was like, well, this homework's just taking me forever. We're actually maybe assigning less homework than we used to. But it's because there's so many distractions. You know, they go on to Google Classroom to check an assignment or to do something and then it's fifteen more minutes before they're back doing what they're supposed to be doing. I've surveyed all five of my classes last year, from ninth grade honors all the way up through seniors going off to college. All of them wanted both a paper book and an electronic version of the book. And, um, what, what we found with the, um, textbook support with the big companies is that, you know, they released this twenty twenty edition and then the following year they revise it. And then we bought the twenty twenty edition. And guess what? Their online tech support isn't supporting that anymore. And if our kids don't have the right browser or an updated browser, they can't get on to get the material. It's frustrating for them, it's frustrating for us. I have to tell them to call some one eight hundred number. Or I'm calling the one eight hundred number during my prep block to try to solve the problem. Like, they, the message from the kids was really clear. They want a book, they want paper, and they want an easy way to access that electronically. And I feel like this does both for them.
They're clean, they're just a PDF file picture color of the book. Um, and there are, and the, the textbook company's just gonna let us use them.
Are you inside Heather? Do you want to?
Yeah, that's, that's, and, yeah, that's it.
And so that's why we're here now. Because normally we would come to you in January or February, but we have to know that you support this and we're, we're asking for your support. But we have to know that you are okay with this before we move on because the scope and sequence has been written and everyone has worked. I wanna acknowledge Lori's specific work. But the next phase is to go and start creating lessons and entering that into Atlas. So that's why we're here on October ten, to see if, if you're okay with this, if you support this, so we can run with this, uh, you know, run with this more and, and do what we're doing this year, but prepare for the, the deeper dive next year.
And just so you guys are aware, we did look at other texts. We didn't just want The Americans to decide to keep it. Heather, do you wanna speak to that real quick?
Some of the, some of them lacked the rich historical narrative. They went a little too far on the visual side and there just wasn't enough meat there. Um, the online access was cumbersome. It didn't die, it, there's, they're expensive, additional renewal costs. It's like they're spoon feeding content in some of the interfaces and that's not what we wanna do. Um, the teacher resource material, again, all online, very complicated to access. It wasn't very high quality in some cases. Um, interactive student materials, again, like I said, they, they're very costly. Um, and there, I don't think there's something we would use. It's not necessarily how we wanna approach this curriculum. We want project-based learning, not some online interface where you read three sentences and answer a multiple choice question. Um, the textbooks are just a roadmap. There's just, they're supplemented material. That's where the deeper learning is, the projects. That's where we're focused. And we'd like to fork, fo- focus our resources.
And we, and we use some really high quality supplementals. I mean, we, we use the Brown Choices Curriculum. All teachers have been trained in fifteen hours of PD. It's problem-based, real life solving. So for example, in one of my classes, they, it's a, it's a moment in history, nineteen forty-one, Britain's broke, Hitler's taken over. What do we do? They've asked for our help. What do we do? Do we help them? How do we help them? And so the kids are presented with options. They then have to research. And then they testify to Congress on their position. And then they have to actually question the other groups and field questions and exseparaneous questions. So this is the type of rich stuff we're doing. That's where we want, you know, the, the, the book is a basic narrative. It's a starting off point. It's not the be all and all. And unfortunately, too many of these textbook country, companies are add a lot of bells and whistles to the textbook to get you to, to buy them, so that you spend all your time with them. But that's not really the philosophy of the Long Meadow High School Social Studies Department. It wasn't when, you know, we taught together and it's not now. Never has been. We've always turned to other, um, other sources.
So there is a motion. I would entertain the motions that we can go into discussion.
I move that the school committee authorized the purchase of additional social studies textbooks for use in the US History Two course in grade eleven. The estimated cost for the additional textbooks is twenty-one thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. I will perform the discussion. Questions? Yes.
Uh, I just wanted to say, I had, I had a lot of questions actually, uh, prior to the presentation. Um, and they've all already been answered. So I appreciate all the time and effort, um, everyone has put into this, uh, ahead of time. It completely makes sense to me. Uh, it seems super exciting and I'm sure the students will be excited about the, the new project. Um, and I look forward to, to seeing those as well. But, um, I appreciate all the time because it, it makes a lot of sense now and it looks like it's, uh, the right fit for the department and for the students. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Carmen, could I, could we just clarify where the money's coming from?
Thank you, that, cause that was what I was gonna ask.
I think finance, uh, when we briefly discussed it, I think it was recommended that we use school choice at this point in the year. We ended FY nineteen with about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So, um, for these one-time purchases, I think it makes sense. For the textbooks, I think some of the other, uh, materials would possibly be in FY twenty-one budget discussion or in the year funds. But I think at this point we need to decide so that we can tell the book company that we're committed to making the purchase.
So would you want the motion to be amended?
I think it should include that the funding source be school choice funds.
Okay, I would entertain an amendment.
I would like to amend my previous motion to include that the money is coming out of the school choice fund.
There is a amendment on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Amendment or vote itself. We will vote on the amendment, which then we would have to vote on the main motion again. So is there any discussion on the amendment of the being part of school choice? Seeing no call for a vote, all in favor. The amendment is approved. So the main motion now adds that amendment to the, the main motion of approving the, the textbooks, which is now back open for discussion. Is there any further discussion? So I'll be the guy in the room that asks the question. Uh, who knows where this is coming from? And I, I, I would just wanna appreciate everything you guys did tonight. I have to echo what Bronwyn said tonight. Um, you know, es- especially, uh, the history department, for some reason, you guys are always smiling and always excited. And like, if you had brought Stacy tonight, you just would've put it over the top. Uh, so, um, so thank you for that enthusiasm. And, and, I mean, you know, Lori, even from my interaction at parent night and tonight, listening, the enthusiasm always comes through. So I really do appreciate everything you guys do and put into this. I just, my question is just, at some point, do we get to an open source curriculum instead of a textbook curriculum? And my thoughts on it are not just, hey, go ahead and create this. It'd be, you know, if that was like a stipend position or if we were able to, um, you know, come up with some kind of little, you know, salary to pay somebody to create the, the open source curriculum, is that something that's i- in the future attainable? Or is that something with what you guys are talking about, kids want textbooks, not attainable?
I think, well, I think he's talking about something different. He's talking about us creating our own, basically our own online textbook. Is that's what I'm hearing you say?
Not necessarily textbook, but I guess a catalog of learning?
Our catalog. I think that that is...
I think we're already doing that in a way.
We do it in a way. I mean, we, we, we do. But this is a historical narrative. I mean, this is, it's the entire narrative. It's the whole story. I think that it's important. I think it's important to read history. I think it's important to read to learn. I mean, I think there's a lot we wanna do with it. We wanna go deeper. We wanna have them research. We want them to look for bias and, and learn to work in groups. And quality, like, make a quality presentation, but...
And honestly challenge the textbook.
Sometimes. Oh, yeah, absolutely. We find, we find mistakes. I mean... Yeah, we find mistakes in the textbooks. We see omissions in the textbooks. We teach kids that the textbook is not the be all and all. In fact, like in ninth grade honors and during the Renaissance unit, we'll take a look at two historians who are arguing about the Renaissance. And then we'll all say, okay, well, how about your textbook narrative? Which narrative does that support? You know, and, and I, in that class I'll get a lot into, well, what does this primary source offer to us that the textbook did not? What was missing? And so we use that as a baseline narrative. I think there is like a baseline jumping off point. Like, this is the basic story of history that I feel like we want all of our kids to know. But we don't want to simplify history to the fact that it's an accept, like, it's just this neat, tidy, orderly, I think Susan brought up the, the word messy before. I want them to understand that, that, that history is messy. Textbook history is neat and tidy. Real history is messy with, and you know, the idea that historians don't agree on their interpretations of historical events. So I'm looking at a feminist historian from the nineteen seventies and I'll even get into historiography. Well, it's the women's era. So how does that influence what, how they're interpreting this history? We go way beyond, but I wouldn't be able to do that if I didn't have that basic narrative available.
We really like having that book even to challenge students.
And it's also very helpful for students who, you know, um, for whatever reason, leave school for a long period of time and we have to supply things. I cannot recreate for a student who's gone for eight to twelve weeks, everything I've done in my classroom. I have to be able to give them a basic narrative that they can use, you know, off-site, so that I can still, you know, provide them with a US history or world history experience.
And we found The Americans is a, it's a good narrative. It's, it's a well-developed class. It's, I mean, book, it's user-friendly. We like the way it's set up.
We actually found a study from Columbia that said The Americans was the best textbook, but the study was old. And I actually con- as part of our research, we contacted the organization. We said, have you done a more recent study on the textbooks that are available? It took me about six weeks. I got, no, sorry, we haven't done that. You know, I contacted Stanford, you know, they're, they're doing a lot of really great stuff. Is there a textbook that you recommend? Sorry, we don't recommend any textbooks. You know, like, I feel like in some ways though, higher level, higher learning institutions don't wanna touch it because there's such a anti-textbook bias, you know. But I think at the high school level, it's still needed.
It's needed.
Perfect, thank you.
And, and just more globally, I mean, I love the question and it's something that we talk quite a bit about. And, and I think two thoughts. One is I think the choice here is reflective of the department's interest in tracking down reliable, good, rich online sources. Uh, oftentimes open source sources. Um, and there's a lot available in the discipline of history. And then my second thought is that, that the answer to your question might depend on the discipline as well and, and sort of what makes sense in one discipline might not make sense in another discipline. So, and you know, if, if we asked, you know, a hundred educators, we might get a hundred different answers to your question too. So it, it's a, it's a, it's an ongoing question. I, I think teachers are far more reliant on, um, reliable, good, rich online sources today than they were a short time ago. And that will, that, that trend will probably continue. But I'd hate to see us get away from, you know, the narrative and the opportunity for students to read uh, a rich source from beginning to end, you know, so it's...
Any other questions, comments? Call for a vote. All in favor? Thank you again. I really appreciate it.
Thank you everybody. Well done.
Oh, that was Diane. Who's Diane?
Just wanna know how many of our students are gonna recognize a newspaper.
Dr. O'Shea sounded like a history teacher there for a second.
At heart, always.
Uh, now we have Dr. O'Shea, your report?
Uh, so briefly, uh, the report is in your packet. There's a, a list of upcoming dates. There's a, a list of upcoming dates, uh, including Challenge Success on Tuesday evening, uh, including your joint meeting with the Select Board on Monday, October twenty-first, and including the Leaf Gala on November second. Reminder that the MSBA will be visiting Long Meadow on October fifteenth in the afternoon. It happens to be our professional development day. Um, and they'll be, arrive at Glenbrook at one-thirty. I think Chairman Ray is going to represent the committee, but if other committee members are interested, we, we certainly could accommodate. I had an opportunity last Friday to attend, as part of my own professional development, a meeting of a fancily-named GS twenty-one group. It's Global Studies Twenty-First Century Skills Group. It's a group of superintendents that come together under the umbrella of the Mass Association of School Superintendents and really focused on enhancing superintendent leadership of developing, um, global competencies in students, twenty-first century learning competencies in students. It was a, my first opportunity to join that group. It's been in place for a number of years, uh, but, uh, I look forward to learning more and, and seeing how it might influence our practice here. Just today, uh, this morning, Sue and Principal Tom Landers and I attended a, an event sponsored by the Rennie Center. And, um, it was very timely, and it really fits in with a lot of what we talked about today. And essentially, it was a report from the Rennie Center on how districts can develop, um, business, education partnerships. And that is something that potentially has the, uh, ability to fuel civics action projects. It has the ability to fuel internships. So, if we can establish those linkages with community partners, businesses, agencies, nonprofits, I think it, you know, tho- those, those relationships create great opportunities for our students. And so, today's event was, was focused on that. Um, the report from the Rennie Center is, uh, before you at your desk today. Uh, we got a PD day on, on the fifteenth. Uh, thank you, parents, for keeping your children at home. Looking forward to the day.
Take 'em back.
Couple highlights, and, and thank you, Sue, for organizing the day's activities. Uh, one of the interesting things, the, the middle school teachers will all participate in a workshop around, uh, the foundations of standards-based instruction and assessment. And we're really beginning to think deeply about how the, the, sort of, the standards-based, uh, work that we've done at the elementary school will sort of roll into, ripple into our middle schools. So, looking forward to that. Challenge Success, which will be here in the evening for parents, uh, will address our middle and high school educators during the day. So, I, I love that we have a chance for parents and our educators to be hearing the same message. Uh, Challenge Success, again, it really fits in with sort of what is emerging as the theme for the year, which is, how do we, um, how do we refresh, renew, broaden our vision for student success? So, the name of the organization says it all. Challenge Success, they, they, they're encouraging us to think as a community about different opportunities, different ways to define student success. So, um, looking forward to that. I'll, I'll be running a session as well on the fifteenth, and then, um, also a lot of sessions at the elementary and middle level just around teaching best practice, particularly in the area of social, emotional learning. So, uh, looking forward to the day. Uh, it's gonna be a busy day because we also have the MSBA coming that day, so, um, and that's all I got.
Any questions for Dr. O'Shea? Yes, Kevin?
So, Marty, I just wonder if you could, could go a little deeper into the, the GS twenty-one?
Sure.
It, it, I, I sounded really interesting, and I would love if you could, could just expand on your, your previous remarks.
Sure. So, it's been around, uh, for a number of years, probably since two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. And, um, it, it's starting to get some traction as a group that brings superintendents together to focus on how we can ensure that kids have the, the skills to be successful in a, in a global economy, in a, in a increasingly interconnected world. And so, the, the group I'm learning, uh, focus, it's sort of equal parts like, uh, a book club and a learning opportunity, but it also has developed some position papers that, uh, are influencing, hopefully, the direction of education in Massachusetts. One of the things that they're looking at this year is how districts can, as, as an example of the projects, how districts can, um, roll out what's called a seal of biliteracy. So, there's a, there's an opportunity that, um, students now have in Massachusetts to earn a seal of biliteracy on their diploma. So, we've started to, we haven't adopted it yet. It's only a year old, uh, but it is, um, uh, endorsed by the, the Department of Education. And so, we're starting to see if that's something that, um, an opportunity that we can extend to our students. Uh, again, I, I don't wanna overpromise. I'm not sure it, it makes sense for us at this point, but that's the type of work that this group is engaged in, is kind of looking at how we can, you know, promote opportunities for kids to be sort of globally competent, but also, how do you create ways to certify that and, and credential that for students? So, those are some of the things that they're, they're working on. It's a, it's a, it's a really interesting, um, group, and, um, I'm, I'm learning how they operate and how they work. But I think it's a, a good learning opportunity for me, and hopefully, I can bring that back to the district, I'd say. So, yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Other questions? All right, Tom?
I, too, will try to be brief. Um, the Safety and Security Committee met on October fourth. Just as a reminder, those includes representatives from police, fire, DPW, IT, and district administrators, and some principals to kind of go over any, uh, building or district safety concerns or issues that might be out there. Uh, Chief Dearborn did give us a brief update on the proposed, uh, gas line project. Uh, we also had, uh, continuing dialogue regarding our family reunification plan. Uh, it's something that we put an extensive amount of work in last year. Our next step will be to develop kits that would be available in any building if we were to ever have to implement a reunification location due to a, uh, some sort of event in town. Um, and then practicing with those kits to understand what's contained in them and how to utilize them, I think will be something we'll work on as one of our priorities this year. We also had a conversation regarding the safety training that the police department provides to staff every year during a staff meeting, um, and also ensuring those that don't attend those meetings, some of the peripheral support positions. How do they, how do we ensure that they, you know, they're receiving the information? Food service, custodians, and, and some of the other support positions. So, we'll be looking at, making sure we, uh, we can offer that during one of the upcoming PD days. Food Service Advisory also met, uh, last week. Um, we looked at participation data from last year. We saw, um, an increase of about eight percent or so. I think we shared some information with school committee when we renewed the contract for fresh picks. We also looked at the proposed budget for FY twenty that, uh, was submitted and planned out our next meetings. We usually go out to each level to have lunch, to kind of experience what the kids do, see how the program runs, look at the offerings that are being provided. Um, so you are all, are welcome to come and join us at any point if you're available. We'd love to have you, just to see what the program offers and, um, what students, how they, what they experience going through the lunch line. Our next meeting is December third at the high school. Uh, I think at eleven-thirty, we'll watch the service and then have lunch. Student Activity Account, so, uh, each of our schools, except for one elementary, has a student activity account. These are, uh, accounts that are, receive funds that have been raised and by students and used for students. Um, the Department of Education and School Committee has some policies around them. One of those requirements is that they're audited every three years. So, the independent auditors are here. They will be here today and tomorrow, and they will be back again later this month to perform those audits. Um, the findings or the recommendations will be brought through Finance Sub and possibly policy also, in case there are any, you know, changes that are recommended to our existing policy regarding the Student Activity Fund. Custodian Training, um, on October fifteenth, as Marty mentioned, the PD day, they'll be receiving a asbestos awareness update training. It's a two-hour training for all of our custodians and maintenance workers. Um, that'll be taking place here at the high school. And I would just like to, uh, acknowledge Paul Griffin. He's a custodian over at Blueberry. He'll be retiring in a couple of months. He's been with us almost twenty years. And lastly, um, I participated in a crowdfunding webinar. Uh, I think there's continuing growth in public schools of, um, ways to support requests and needs of schools that the budgets can't seem to, uh, provide for. And, um, my position has kind of been keeping it at bay, uh, specifically when there's any kind of exchange of cash. But this was more around giving teachers the opportunity to get materials, um, that they can select from of what donors choose is the, this specific, um, online opportunity. So, we'll, we'll continue to look at and see if it's something that Long Meadow might be interested in implementing. Again, I would think it would require policy that we would wanna establish in terms of, you know, how it's used and when it's used and so on. But we'll keep you posted.
Any questions for Tom or comments?
Yeah, just quick, are you talking like something like, like GoFundMe or something like that? Is that what you mean?
Well, GoFundMe usually is more of an exchange of cash. There's money that's raised to be used for a specific purpose.
Yeah.
The donors choose is where a teacher would be able to go online and create a, basically, a project where they select material or equipment that would be used in their classroom. Um, so there's no exchange of money directly to an individual. You would register as a district and a school. There'd be reports that are provided in terms of, uh, what projects are out there, what percentage of funding has been received. So, they receive donations, whether it be financial to pay for the purchase, but the teacher is not receiving any, or the district is not receiving any cash funds, it's materials. That then become their property of the district, not property of the individual.
Okay.
Yeah, and if anybody wants to see an example, I, a friend of mine in Springfield had a project that she wanted funded for a laminator. And so, she works in special ads. She needed a laminator to, to laminate her materials. She could reuse them that she creates by hand. And basically, the project is out there. You fund towards the project, and then as soon as there's enough money, the project gets delivered to her. Like, there, she never touches cash. Cash doesn't go to her. It goes to the, to the donors' choose. And then, but if anybody wants to see it, I'd be more than happy to show how it worked for, for me and my, with my friend.
So, it's something we'll talk with the volunteers about, see, you know, how they feel, and if there's a request that they're aware of or interest or needs out there.
And I could see the, the use of this for things like Lego robotics, right? Or, or any other of the, the projects that, you know, and we're talking about this civic action. I mean, you may need something to, to fund, you know, materials or whatever else outside of the normal course.
Tom, have you talked to any of the other districts that are using, like, in my district, it's been very...
Yeah, part of the webinar, Shrewsbury, was online and talked about the process they went through. They piloted with a school at each of the three levels, one teacher specifically to go through and experience the software and, you know, how effective it was in terms of success, uh, the reporting back to the administrator, to the district-level personnel. And, and so, they spoke, uh, very highly, specifically of donors' choose was who they, and they did, I guess, looked at seventeen different organizations that, you know, do this type of, um, opportunity. And so, they really, they eliminated some because they weren't specific K-12 geared, but they really, uh, in the end, selected donors' choose as the one that they would, uh, direct their staff to. So, they spoke very positive about their experience with it.
Any other comments concerned? All right, uh, for my report, um, I guess I just wanna bring up a few things, which we'll probably talk about again in Finance Sub, but, uh, the, um, Student Opportunity Act was released, uh, it's in Massachusetts. Uh, it's already been voted on by the senators, uh, in regards to, um, funding the Chapter Seventy education in the state of Massachusetts. Analyzing the, um, the, the legislation, I, as an individual, not as the committee at large, just I as an individual, had some serious, uh, questions about the inequity of the funding towards suburban and small towns. Um, so, I contacted both Senator Lester's office and Representative Ash's office to make my thoughts known that, um, I felt that education shouldn't be pitted against the suburbs versus the larger cities, that if there is, uh, if we're going to be funding, that I understand that, that urban centers definitely need, uh, more funding, but so do the suburbs. Uh, we have, they have certain, um, things that, that, that create hardships in, in education that funding could help out with. But when we're talking about tax ceiling in Long Meadow and we're talking, or, um, you know, about what the, uh, population of taxpayers already gracefully gives to the town of Long Meadow and the funding, uh, if they were going to do a funding program, I thought it should be, um, enabling the, the suburbs as well to, to, uh, for the, from the funding perspective. Um, you know, I didn't, I talked to, uh, Robin at, at Representative Ash's office, who was awesome, I gotta say. We had a great conversation, uh, back and forth. Um, I was having a conversation with Senator Lester's office, and he actually picked up the phone mid-conversation I was having with, with one of his aides. And we also had a great conversation just about, um, you know, what the funding was for. Uh, definitely was, um, geared more towards the urban centers, but that Long Meadow is going to recognize, um, some positives as well, specifically special ed circuit breaker, uh, legislation, uh, within, within the, the act, uh, and something to help offset the rising healthcare costs, uh, in, in the, uh, in the package as well. And the third point was that, um, you know, it was also geared towards, uh, reimbursing districts for out-of-district transportation costs, which I, you know, just explained from our perspective. You know, we've done a lot of in-housing, as well as a lot of suburban communities have done a lot of in-housing of, um, you know, some of those services over the last ten years, which makes that transportation less relevant today than it did in the past, at least my own personal, uh, opinion. Uh, so, the Senate voted on it. Senator Lesser, uh, again, I can't say enough how appreciative I am of him taking my call. Um, you know, like I said, mid, I would, I didn't even ask for him. It was, he, he just grabbed the phone, started talking to me. Um, he offered that, uh, to set up a meeting with us and, uh, him directly, that he'll come in and, you know, talk to us more about how they, they developed, uh, the legislation. Uh, and, um, you know, Representative Ash's office, uh, had some great information as well. And the, the House has not voted yet on it. They're still in debate on, on some of the things. Um, I would say Senator Comiford out of North Hampton should be commended greatly, uh, for, uh, and, and Senator Lesser was a co-signer to this as well, an amendment to at least start the investigation or, or research on the effect of Proposition Two and a Half on, uh, communities, uh, that are starting to hit the tax ceiling. And, uh, to their credit, they put that out there because the, just as we had predicted at meetings before, none of the Republican, um, legislators would support that. And even members of their own party were questioning why they would do anything that would raise taxes, uh, when in effect, this would not raise taxes. This would allow local communities to be able to raise taxes on a local-community-only basis based upon their, their circumstances. Uh, so, I, I have to commend both Senator Comiford and, um, and Senator Lesser for taking a stand that was not a very popular stand. Uh, and we knew this from the Tax Ceiling Task Force, that we had predicted that may be the, uh, the immediate reaction. So, good news is, um, Senator Lesser, uh, has offered. We're going to try and get him there as soon as we can, as soon as his schedule and our schedules can, can sync up. Uh, then the invitation would be for, for Representative Ash as well at any time. Um, but, uh, you know, I still have concerns that the legislation does not help the suburbs as much as I think that it should. And, you know, as a member, individual member of the committee, I am gonna fight for as much funding as I can for our district and for our town, uh, and, uh, and I will continue to do so. So, uh, that was, that was, uh, mine on the, the budget. We, yeah.
Did you?
Oh, sorry, I lost my hand. Um, I was at the Wolf Swamp PTO the other day. Um, Ms. Sealy was there. Um, she was, she, she saw the Digital Natives, uh, presentation, uh, last year, um, put on by Dr. O'Shea and, and the administration. Um, and it inspired her to get more involved in the, the issues surrounding, um, you know, devices and how it affects, um, you know, children and their, their, their whole well-being and, and a lot of different things. So, I, I, you know, I just gotta come... So I, I, you know, I just got to commend her for her dedication and she's trying to put together a group of parents to try and, you know, get, get a message out there, develop a strategy. You know, I was, when we were at this meeting, we, it's an elementary school and we started talking just about, you know, how young some children are getting a phone. And I'm not here to tell a parent their kid had a phone. That's not, you know, within in me at all, or, you know, everybody has their own personal circumstances. But on the other side of the spectrum, it's also okay for a child not to have a smartphone until a certain age. And, and the, you know, the answer of, well, everybody else has a phone, it just isn't true. And it's to try and reassure parents across the spectrum that, you know, you don't have to, you know, buy a smartphone for a third grader or a fourth grader, you know, unless your personal circumstance, you know, warrants it. You know, there's other things out there. There's flip phones still that you can get. I mean, they're not easy to get. And there's things called gizmos that are like ten pre-programmed numbers and a GPS. But just, just to try and take the pressure off of parents and make sure they know that every, you know, that, that everybody like feels these pressures and, and, you know, and it's not, you're not just there alone. Like there's a community behind you. So she's trying to build this community. I think it's commendable, but, and, and, you know, what, definitely looking to give her some support. And then for, oh, the, I was in the school, two of the schools this week. I wanted to tell Tom the custodian uniforms look awesome. So I talked to a couple of whom, doesn't seem like to be a big adjustment and that looks to be great. So I didn't get that. And then at the same, the same meeting, a mom, physician, you know, asked me about our stance on a gas pipeline, you know, given concerns of, you know, based in science, you know, about what the, you know, American Academy of Pediatrics had for, for data. And, you know, feeling that, you know, maybe her concerns and others weren't being heard, you know, appropriately enough. Again, as an individual member, I told her that, you know, we know that Marty is dealing with Chief Dearborn and Chief Stankowitz and the Safety Committee and the town. You know, I, I can say, I heard earlier tonight a comment that, you know, that, that the Safety Committee has said that there is no danger to the town. And that message has never come across at all. I mean, there is an acute awareness that there is definitely, you know, potential for, for, you know, things that are not good for the town and it's probably not the best location for, you know, I don't personally think it would be the best location. But, you know, there's a lot of things that are unsettled. And from a mitigation perspective, I know that the town officials, the Select Board are doing what they can to address that situation and guide us in that, in that, that journey. So, you know, I, we are, I, I would rest assured to the Wolf Swamp and the rest of the district that the school board is acutely aware of anything that would endanger children. We are in constant contact with Chief Dearborn, Chief Stankowitz, the town manager, Marty and the Safety Committee to look at all those kind of issues. And not just that kind of issue, but we were talking about what faded, faded, faded crosswalk lines across town, you know, walkways that are broken up that children could trip on. So there's a lot of different safety issues, but I definitely want to say thank you for the, the science. Definitely appreciate that and, and it's not going unknown. So that's all I had. All right, we have subcommittee reports. The finance subcommittee met. You guys have some motions?
Well, there are a couple items on the agenda tonight. The first, Finance Sub asked me to look at building use rates. And so we, we compared some data with surrounding communities in terms of what we charge for groups to come in and rent our facilities. And what is in your packet tonight is what came from our discussion in looking at surrounding communities in terms of what they charge. I think just a little historical information, the, the high school rates that are under the standard hourly rate sections were established in fiscal year 2014 when the high school opened. And they've been that same rate. Basically, they doubled what the rate was for the elementary and middle schools. They all fell in that one category, which now are the elementary and middle school rate. So when we established them back in FY14, we just basically doubled them. What we found from looking at surrounding communities is that most districts charge a minimum of $200 for the use of an auditorium at the high school, anywhere from $200 to $500 per hour. We, we do have a number of groups, specifically dance recitals that occur in the spring. They run about almost eight consecutive weekends in a row. And so the goal was to make us competitive, not necessarily to drive renters away, but to get a reasonable amount for the space that they are looking to rent. So what, what was recommended was to double the rate for the high school auditorium from $100 to $200 per hour. And to double the, a little bit more than, just a little bit more than double the cost of the pool at the high school from $80 to $150 per hour. The other adjustments would be the hourly rate we charge for custodial coverage. Those rates have been the same since FY18, so for the last two years, we haven't raised them. So we would adjust them for hourly time and a half at $40.50 and double time or holiday pay would be $58. The reduced rates, which we charge to, say, Park and Rec or other nonprofit organizations, we did not adjust the rates at all. We are increasing or proposing to increase the custodial rates to match what we would charge for regular groups. So tonight, there is a motion to, I guess, approve based on the recommendation of Finance Sub, the rates for FY20.
Is there a motion?
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Sub Committee that the school committee set the facility use rates as presented on the document Building Use Fees 2019-2020, beginning this fiscal year FY20.
Motion. Is there a second? Motion is second. Any further discussion?
I have a question, Armin.
Yeah.
So, Tom, for the, for the pool, the $150 per hour, does that include, like, who does lifeguards, who pays for?
So the only group we really have that rents it would be the Pioneer Valley Swim League Championships, which their request is later on the agenda. They have to provide their own lifeguards. I do believe the Boy Scouts or somebody does a certification once a year, but I don't think we charge them for use of the pool and they would be responsible for bringing their lifeguards.
Okay, so they pay, they pay this $150 per hour? And then outside of that, they have to hire their own and they pay them? Okay.
Yeah, we provide our own, the Boy Scouts, we provide our own certified lifeguards, yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor?
So the next item on the agenda are eight building use requests. So I purposely held the request this year until the rate discussion was finalized. I didn't want to issue or approve requests and issue permits and then go back and say, well, we've changed the rates and so now there's a new dollar amount associated with your request. So Finance Sub has reviewed and brought forward the request that requires school committee approval under our building use policy, I think it's KF, it's K-something. Anything, any request that has more than, I believe, fifty attendees has, has to come before school committee for approval. Finance Sub is not authorized to approve those. So these requests, again, a majority of them being dance recitals, but the swim league championships, and I believe there's a 5K or that is using some space, all have participation that would exceed the level for Finance Sub to authorize. So there are eight, unfortunately, individual requests that require review and possible approval from school committee.
Are these eight separate votes or are these, can we do?
I defer to, if you wanna.
Can we do it by consent?
If you want to batch them all.
Okay. I would entertain a consent motion.
Might need to provide specifically what that entails in terms of the language. Just that authorize school committee to provide consent to the eight building use requests as presented?
Yes.
Something like that?
Yeah. Is there such a motion?
I, I move that we,
Do what Tom said?
Yeah, what Tom said. Yeah, that we approve all eight of the building use requests. I think I forgot some words. As presented, thank you.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further conversation? Seeing none, call for vote. All in favor?
And the last item on the agenda is the Student Opportunity Act. So Finance Sub did have dialogue in regards to the proposal legislation. As Armin indicated, the senate has already passed, voted and passed the legislation. I believe in their packet is a draft statement that Finance Sub recommended with the idea of possibly sending letters to our elected officials and inviting them to come to a future meeting.
So the two letters are in your packet. Do not believe we need a motion. I'm, we're looking more for consent for me to sign this on behalf of the committee. Yes.
Just a question. I mean, I know that you mentioned the statutory property tax levy limits. The only comment I had was, could we make that a little bit more? It just, and again, I'm happy for people to disagree with me. It just seemed like that was, I, I would have stressed it more, I guess. It was my only comment. Everything else I thought was good. But since it is such a present thing in our community, I would make that a little stronger language.
So you're suggesting something where it says nearing the, like, just say, which would constrict Long Meadow's ability to?
I guess, let me, I'm leaving more clear. I was thinking maybe a separate sentence that said, and we really, or something about, we really hope that you will take up that issue in separate legislation or something. Right? I mean, I know you said that they, they talked about how they want to do that. And, and maybe we're saying, we really support you and we really want that to happen. Like something more than just what it is here, to stress the importance of that to our town.
Okay.
Would you, I'd certainly be willing to, based on that feedback, if that's the consent of the group, I'd be willing to take a shot at that and prep it for Armin? Or do you want to agree on some specific wording here?
Do we want to get this, we want to get this out to them sooner than later. So I would say we should just do it in here. I agree. I, I think that's fine. You're thinking like one more sentence after this paragraph? Or are you thinking, is it something very strong about the Prop Two and a Half that, you know, something?
What I would say is I really dislike trying to draft language by committee. I am very happy, if we agree, letting Marty or somebody else put that in somehow.
Yeah, good point. We can, we can agree. Oh, yeah, good point.
Okay. So then by consent, we will let Marty add it to this and approve me to sign Marty's change of wording. Okay, perfect. So I would also just say, the, the Select Board is actually waiting for, or not Select Board, the Tax, Tax Ceiling Task Force is also waiting for this from us. So once we send that, we will also send a copy to the Tax Ceiling Task Force for their records. And then they are going to send a letter endorsing what we're approving or asking for as well. Any further discussion on that?
I might just mention for anybody watching at home, that the letter essentially is an endorsement of the Student Opportunities Act with the qualification that it, it, it really doesn't help Long Meadow address the looming tax ceiling. So, and, and I, I hope that Long Meadow, that the target shared amount that Long Meadow normally is subject to would increase. So, but I, I think we're, I have some thoughts on how we can tighten up the language and make it more pointed, so.
And I would say that, you know, we've had some very good conversations. I'd like to thank members of the public for injecting, injecting their comments into the, the debate as well, especially Mr. Landon, you know, for staying on top of it. You know, not everything is going to, you know, come to realization. But we are going to try and advocate for Long Meadow as best as we can. And I think this is a first step, along with contacting legislatures and getting people like Senator Lesser in here as well. All right, Policy Sub. There's a motion? There's a motion.
The KI request for school visitation, which I think it was two meetings ago, the, of school committee reviewed and made some suggested changes at that meeting. What you have in front of you is the final draft that's been available for thirty days that we've not had, I assume, any public comment on. So it is here for your, hopefully, approval this evening.
There's a motion?
I move on the recommendation of the Policy Sub Committee that the school committee approve the changes to policy KI and rename it. KI Request for School Visitors, as presented.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Yes.
So the, in, in what Ryan just read, it says KI Request for School Visitors, as presented. And then the file name is Request for School Visitation?
What's on, this is the proper amended name, Request for School Visitation.
Okay, so do we have?
It was incorrect on the annotated agenda. So the, the correct name for the, the proposed new name for the policy is actually Request for School Visitation.
But you did say visitors, right?
Right.
Okay, so as amended? As amended, second. As amended, second. Any further discussion? Good catch. Say a call for vote. All in favor? On going business, so we have a meeting in November, which is on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So my suggestion is that we move that meeting to the Monday instead of the Tuesday. We'll be kind of starting to get into the budget season there, so I would hate just to cancel it. And I understand people may not be able to be there on Monday. But, you know, we started the budget process way too late last year. I don't want to get caught behind it again. At least on the, I would say, the district admin had everything in control. The school committee, I think, took it on too late. So that, I, I definitely want to make that distinction. So I guess I'm just suggesting we move that meeting from that Tuesday to the Monday, just in case people are traveling the next couple of days. So if there's a problem with that, let me know.
So just a question. So on my calendar, we have a meeting on Tuesday, November fifth.
Yeah.
On Tuesday, November nineteenth. And now you're saying we're gonna have a meeting on Monday, November twenty-fifth?
No.
That's not what we have?
If you look on the count, if you look on the district calendar, the dates that are on there are this, November twenty-sixth.
The fifth is town meeting.
Oh, okay.
I think that must be the fall town meeting date.
Yes.
I think I must have had an earlier version of our school committee meeting calendar.
For the twelfth.
And the twenty-sixth is why you're gonna go to the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so the nineteenth, the nineteenth is not a thing?
December twenty-fourth?
Beautiful, okay, thank you.
Did we address December twenty-fourth?
Yeah, oh yeah, we're gonna, there's a couple more we're gonna talk about right now. Cause school meeting calendar's here, so whatever we're gonna talk about. Yes, December twenty-fourth. We only, the, the school committee traditionally only has one meeting in the month of December. So if nobody has an issue, we will cancel the December twenty-fourth meeting unless somebody wants to have it. Okay. If there's any issues that come up traditionally between that meeting, which is what, on the twelfth? No, twenty-fourth, tenth? Yeah. There's any issues that come up with tenth in that first meeting in January. Also traditionally, we've, we scheduled a special off-meeting during the daytime if we had to do anything for the, the district. You know, and understanding that we would need a floor for a forum. And then the last one I had was October twenty-second, we have a meeting scheduled. But October twenty-first, we have a joint meeting with the Select 21st, we have a joint meeting with the Select Board. So, my thought would be, the Select Board is meeting from 6:00 to 7:30, and then we're going to join them, I would just say, why don't we meet at 6:00 to 7:30 in the room down the hall, that way we don't have to have the regular School Committee meeting the next day on Tuesday, unless anybody has an objection to that. The only other, yes?
So I think that day is the day that the new members are having their training.
I'm going, I'm going there next.
Oh, all right.
It's at 5:15.
So we do have, that was, that's my butt, on the Tuesday, we do have the new member training, I guess my question is, do you want to reschedule the new member training? Do we want to just keep the Tuesday meeting, or do we want to do something on the 21st? And I know the first hour of that meeting on that week, whatever day we definitely choose, Sue's got a instructional update for all of us, so that'll probably be lengthy. Well, it will.
Maybe an hour.
It'll be like an hour probably, right?
Probably.
Yeah, okay. So, so we have that as well, so I'm open for any suggestions.
I'd like to see it all on the 21st and do the new member training a different, how far out can we go on that?
We can go farther out, I mean, it doesn't have to be done.
No.
I think, I think the new members get six months.
As soon as your term is up.
A year, okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, just, just so we aren't every, because I think, I think, doesn't Williams have, Williams has parent teacher conferences that night, too.
On the 21st?
No, on the 24th and 25th.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Yeah, middle school parent teacher.
Yeah, I would, I concur with you.
So, we'll move the regular School Committee meeting till 6 o'clock till 7:30, we'll meet jointly with the Select Board, Finance Committee, when that meeting's over, we'll reconvene as a School Committee if we need extra time.
Pax next.
And reschedule the training.
Yeah, we'll reschedule the trainings for a later date, we'll let Jenny know whenever that, when we come up with a better date for that.
After the holidays, probably.
After the holidays, probably, yes.
And before you move off the 22nd, if the 22nd is free now, that does clear the decks if you wanted to identify a committee member to join the Sustainable Energy and Sustainability Committee?
So, I've already been in touch with them, they changed the date of that meeting.
Oh, they changed that as well?
Yeah.
A lot of things changing.
Yeah, because I know, Kevin, you did reach out, right?
Yeah. It's gonna, it's gonna be on the 29th, October 29th.
Okay, excellent.
Okay, so that's, so that's the calendar, and then the other thing about the calendar is next, what is it, the 16th, we've got the potluck at Marie Angelidi's house, just as a informal gathering of the public boards to start the discussion on the budget season, so just put that out there. Executive session, there is no executive session planned for this meeting, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move that the School Committee adjourn the October 10th, 2019 School Committee.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Look at that, right when the Giants are about to play that expansion team. Everybody have a great night.
Thanks.